Okay, I'll call the order of Sparks City Council Meeting of February 26, 2018. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini, absent. Council members Abbott.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Byby.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, you know, I don't see anything on my agenda for the invocation or the pledge of allegiance, so I'm just gonna stick that in. It's not on mine. I know Barbara's here.
You have the redevelopment agency. Do you have redevelopment agency or council agenda?
Well, it could be the council, it's not on mine.
Well, Barb West is up.
Okay, so, oh, there's Barb West, right there. And then, it's there, I found it. If everybody will stand, please, for Barbara West from the Sparks Church of Nazarene for our invocation. Welcome, Barbara, sorry about that.
Thank you, Ron. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Father God, we just come to you again today as we come to do business. We thank you that we live in a country where we are free to elect our officials and then let them do the business at hand. And so today, we would pray a blessing upon each and every one of these leaders. We pray that you would keep Mayor Martini healthy and well. And Lord, give wellness and health to all of these fine members of the council as well. And as they talk about the business of our beloved city, we pray that your wisdom would be imparted to them so that they can do the business at hand that would be as we would want our city to be led. Lord, we thank you too for the protection that you're giving through our first responders, our police, and our emergency medical people, as well as our firefighters. Pray that you would be with them and bless them. And Lord, keep all of our schoolchildren safe, as well as all of us. We thank you for all that you're going to do for our great city, and we come asking these blessings in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Barbara. If you remain standing for the pledge, Mr. Driscoll, would you lead us today?
Please join me. My pledge to leave.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I want to open up the public comment. If there's anybody in public wishing to speak today, if you'll fill out a card and we'll get you up here. Our first speaker is Susan Schultz. Welcome, Susan. And you get three minutes here, you know the drill.
Where do I speak? Right here?
Yeah, that'd be great. Have a seat.
My name is Susan Schultz, and my husband Alan lived in this area for many years. We first moved to the vistas in 1994, and then moved to Fairway Village at Cully Ranch in 2003. Our address is 989 Turnberry Drive. Safety officials now tell us, if we see something, we should say something. Because I have seen something and experienced a near miss myself, is why I'm here today. When we go to shop, business, or meet friends, we travel from our home across Sparks Boulevard to go across Ion Drive, or to turn right or left. In the past two years, the traffic has become very heavy, a definite increase. A driver must look three directions, left and right, and across to Ion to make sure Sparks Boulevard is clear for travel. Sometimes it's clear, and other times it's not. A strange thing also happens, usually from north Sparks Boulevard. The roadway is clear, and other times it is not. When the... Then all of a sudden, there is a vehicle in the roadway. While not a traffic engineer, I've noticed that the southbound traffic appears to speed up when it comes around the curve on Sparks Boulevard from Oak Hill and Cathedral Peak Boulevard. This speed up is noticeable and dangerous, and although the clear intersection may be there momentarily, it is not there when one thinks the road is clear. What I'm here to tell someone, i.e. you, the city council, that this intersection must be fixed before something tragic happens. There is pedestrian and walking and driving school traffic across the busy road. I'm asking for consideration of a sign to alert drivers of the pedestrian and vehicles, a stop sign, a stop light, a slowdown sign, something. This intersection is very dangerous. For your information, the developers of this community, when it was built, told the earlier residents they knew Sparks Boulevard would be a busy thoroughfare in the future. They had made allowances for this in the early stage, and put into place electrical boxes to take care of signage in the future. I never saw this equipment, took the developer at his word, as well as the city, that such a problem would be taken care of when the need arose. This would be easy to check with the planning department, and it would minimize any cost. In closing, the time is now, with two new schools being built further north off of Sparks Boulevard, as well as more homes, the exact number I don't know. I'm asking this to prevent a future accident or tragedy from occurring. I know the budget is small, and the request, the need, is financially large in our city.
Can you wrap it up?
I have told someone of this problem. I was able to obtain a copy of the accident reports on Sparks Boulevard. I did not receive the actual accident report for the above-noted intersection, but from 7/17/2018 to 2/12/28... That should be 2... 7/17/2017 till 2/12/2018, at the intersection of Sparks, Los Altos, Village Knolls Drive, Village Meadows, Cathedral Peak, and Oak Hill, there have been, in seven months, a total of 25 accidents in Sparks Boulevard.
Okay, Susan.
I made a request for the other information, but I didn't get it. I didn't realize I didn't get it.
Okay.
But that's my request.
Thank you. John, could you have... There he is, right there. Would you get in touch with her? Okay, thank you. Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? I don't have any other cards. Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Number five, approval of the agenda. We need to pull two items, 7.1 and 9.5, so in your motion, if you'd address that. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the agenda without items 7.1 and 9.5.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a second from Mr. Abbott. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Yeah, it's over. Thank you. Okay, 6.1, consideration discussion and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks City Council Meeting of February 12, 2018. Mr. Lawson.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Dare.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to number seven, announcements, presentations, and recognition items. The first one, 7.1, we pulled. 7.2, proclamation for International Women's Day. Is there somebody here? Well, we'll read the proclamation anyway.
Whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and have served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement; and whereas American women have played and continue to play a critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home; and whereas American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force, and were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation; and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all; and whereas despite these contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, and study of American history; and whereas International Women's Day is celebrated in many countries around the world on March 8 to recognize women for their achievements without regard to division whether national, ethnic, linguistic, cultural, economic, or political. Therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, hereby proclaims March 8, 2018, as International Women's Day.
Okay, we'll move on to the 7.3, a proclamation for Excel Christian School Day. Christopher, you want to go down and accept this? You want to give us your name for the record?
Hello, my name's Christopher Dare. I'm the Director of Advancement for Excel Christian School, and I'm honored to be for him, be in front of such fine, fine folk.
Let me read this proclamation for you. Whereas Excel Christian School was founded in Sparks, Nevada, in 2003 with the philosophy of developing a loving, nurturing environment that through relationships, they minister to the whole person spiritually, intellectually, physically, emotionally, socially; and whereas Excel Christian School is an institution that offers a high level of learning and spiritual needs, complementing the educational opportunities in our city; and whereas in the past year, Excel Christian School has grown in the area of student enrollment, academic excellence, sports achievements, and serving the community, ensuring Sparks residents a safe alternate alternative to educate and prepare their children for the future; and whereas the City of Sparks congratulates Excel Christian School for their intended goals of incorporating robotics and STEAM values into their ongoing curriculum. And now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March 3, 2018, as Excel Christian School Day.
Thank you.
Mr. Dare.
So, we have a big dinner we do each year, and this is... Each year, it's been pretty wonderful watching our city get behind our school, and I can tell you, our students and everybody definitely appreciate that. But our dinner is this Saturday, and it's always exciting to see. But education is such a key element to what we do in our community, and our schools are just a piece of that puzzle. And so, thank you for all your support, and we look forward to what the future holds. But thank you.
Christopher, do you have seats available at the dinner?
We do have seats available, just for a couple...
Might want to give them the phone numbers.
Couple more days, yes. So if you call, 356-9995, 356-9995, another day or so, and after that, we have to shut down. But it's a pretty nice dinner, and we have all kinds of silent auction items. We have... The best auction items we have is our little kids actually make art. And, yeah, I know, usually, I don't know if you're coming this year or not, but...
We're gonna be out of town. We got one last year, and I certainly encourage everyone to come. It's a great event, wonderful people there, and something that you won't forget, and you want to come to again next year.
Yeah, our preschoolers, all the kids make different art, and then we actually auction it off, so it's kind of some of the best art in town, so...
Yeah. What... Where's it at?
It's actually at the Pepper Mill, and it starts at 6 o'clock on that night. And if you have any questions about Excel, we are continuing registration, and everything's good.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, get a photo. Okay, 7.4, Proclamation Social Work Month. Come on down. Thank you. Are you with her also, or do you want to come down?
I am, I wasn't planning on coming. I'm here to support her.
Well, sit right next to her and support her, and give us your names, and Ed will read the proclamation.
Thank you, city council members, for having me. My name is Shawna Alto, I'm a licensed social worker here in Nevada. And this is Jill Manette, one of my professors at the University of Nevada Reno, and also a fellow social worker. I wanted to thank you for the honor of being here, and for the recognition of Social Work Month. My hope was to bring awareness to the fact that social workers go far beyond just the direct client services, but we also advocate and we bring about change in our communities, bring about change in many lives, in both local, state, and national levels. So, thank you so much for having us.
Well, great. Edward.
Let's read this proclamation then. Whereas the primary mission of social work profession is to enhance well-being and help meet the basic needs of all people, especially the most vulnerable in society; and whereas social work is one of the fastest-growing careers in the United States, with almost 650,000 members of the profession; and whereas social work workers work in areas, in all areas of society, to improve happiness, health, and prosperity, including in government, schools, university, social service agencies, communities, the military, and mental health and healthcare facilities; and whereas social workers recognize that all individuals are unique, possess strengths, and are deserving of dignity and respect; and whereas social workers fight for social justice in the face of discriminatory and oppressive systems to improve the lives of others; and whereas social workers are advocates within the realm of public policy as a way of standing up for and being the voice of those who are vulnerable and marginalized; and whereas social workers embody this year's Social Work Month theme, show... Let me see. Let me reread that one. Social workers embody this year's Social Work Month theme, which is: "Social workers, leaders, advocates, champions, by bringing awareness to and protecting services for healthcare and mental healthcare, education, substance abuse treatment, fair housing, and other social programs. Whereas social workers have helped this nation live up to its ideals by successfully pushing for equal rights for all. Now, therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, now do hereby proclaim March 2018 as Social Work Month." Thank you.
I'm gonna get a picture of you, too. Yeah?
I think that's big.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7.5, a Sparks Heritage Museum and Cultural Center annual report. Come down, Barbara. Dick, you can come down?
No, I'm just sitting here.
Okay. Hi, Barbara.
Good afternoon. My name is Barbara Young. I'm the President of the Board of Trustees for Sparks Museum. Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, council members. I'm here to present to you today the end of fiscal year 2017 annual report for the Sparks Museum. We're very fortunate to have 40 volunteers at the museum who are devoted to the museum and continue to support our endeavors, and they have provided over 6,400 hours of service to the museum. Many of our volunteers have been with us for five, 10 years. Our train continues to attract a lot of visitors. We conduct 45-minute tours on Saturday afternoons and teach people about the history for Sparks, and showing them the beautiful train that it is and the interior. I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you here today to come down to the museum, and our train conductor, Dick Drelling, will provide you with a guided tour any day, any time. And I'm sincere about that, you could bring your families and learn a bit more about what we have to offer down there at the train. Based on our voluntary sign-in register, we receive about a third of our visitors from outside of the state of Nevada. We can have people come in by appointment, and we will give them a docent tour of the museum. These are various school groups and organizations who came in during our fiscal year 2017. In addition to giving them a tour of the train and the museum, we also have a docent by appointment that can talk to them about the Glendale Schoolhouse. We are very grateful this year to the City of Sparks for providing us with all new carpets throughout the galleries and also in the office. We had some volunteers who painted all the walls, and we took that opportunity to, we had to, dismantle all the exhibits, and we took that opportunity to rearrange things, clean things up, give it a new feel, and really revitalized the exhibits. All of these things that we have accomplished, and with the city providing us with all new carpet, the museum has a whole new look to it, and we really appreciate what you've done for us. We continue to bring in art exhibits. These various events were held in the Cultural Center at the museum. Every first Saturday of the month, we have free lectures. We bring in local speakers that do this for free, and we offer it to the community for free, talking about the history of northern Nevada. We continue to showcase artwork from local artists, and the art exhibits usually last for about two months, and during that time, we have reception where the local people can meet the artist, possibly buy some art, which also, in turn, we receive at the museum a portion of those art sales. Every year, we have bus trips. This year, we did something a little bit different. We took an overnight trip to Eureka, and stopped along the way and saw historic sites. Fred Horlocker, retired Sparks schoolteacher and renowned local historian, conducts these tours for us. The museum shared two artifacts this year with the community. The National Stamp Society had a convention, and our post office artifact was on display for all to enjoy. Military celebrated Flag Day this year, and our 36-star silk single-appliqué flag was on display. We run out the Cultural Center as a revenue maker, and we have a wide variety of activities there. As you can see, we have the memorials and wedding receptions, and various businesses in town hold business meetings there. We continue to try to promote our Cultural Center to increase our revenue. Our challenge is to inform the community that we, here in Sparks, have a wonderful museum, and we keep trying to convince people to come on down and see us, because we know they'll enjoy what they see. We work hard to keep the museum exhibits interesting, and we change them frequently enough to justify membership at the museum. Our lectures and art exhibits have brought more people through the year, and we need to increase that pace to become more financially stable. The Board of Trustees and the volunteers who work at the museum really enjoy what they do, and we enjoy supporting the community. I thank you for your time, and do you have any questions for me?
Any questions?
I just had a comment. I would like to echo your shout-out to the Cultural Center for rentals, and actually, I have it rented next week for an event.
Thank you.
But I'm hoping a lot of people that I've invited to my reception have no... I ask every one of them, have you been in the Cultural Center upstairs in the museum? And most of them have not. So, I think I'm encouraged to just share that information. It's a beautiful location. The price is very reasonable for that type of venue. The cost is surprisingly low, so I encourage people to use that. And for me personally, it was the library, Sparks Library, that I grew up going to as a little girl, so it kind of has a personal place in my heart. But you guys do a great job with the services that I've, you know, asked to be provided with and other events that I've been, so encourage other people to give you guys a call and rent it out.
Councilwoman, Abby.
Mr. Dare.
Yes, we've used it on a few occasions, too, and just want to say that they do a great job of, when we use it, for dances, and also for 39-hour things and stuff like that. But also, could you reiterate and explain? It's fun watching more and more of our plate, car license plates driving around. I saw some the other day in Reno, and I was like, yeah. So, anyway, but if you could explain how that works, and so people know how to support what's going on there as well.
Well, as with other personal plates, you can make an appointment with the DMV. That's... You definitely want to do that. And go down there on your point of day with your registration, your insurance, tell them you want to have a Last Chance Joe plate. The big benefit is, we receive a portion of, every time you renew that personal plate, we receive a portion of those fees. We have to have 1,000 plates sold this year in order to continue to have them be offered to the community. So, I encourage everyone to go down and get a personal Last Chance Joe plate. Dick, do you have anything to add to that? You are the wizard on the DMV plates.
License plates are sales. We still got a few of the low numbers available. All you gotta do is pull them in and get on the list, and pick something under 100.
Yeah, that's a good number to have. I have number eight.
Eight.
Engine number eight.
Mr. Abbott.
Yeah, Barbara, what exhibit do we have in the... Excuse me, in the Cultural Center, right?
Right now, it's... We're in between. We had a lot of history pictures of Nevada, Sparks area in particular. We are dismantling that this week, and we are taking in the next art exhibit, which is Latimer Art Exhibit. And so, that'll be installed first week in March, next week. So, we're kind of in between right now, but...
Okay. Thanks, Barbara. Thank you very much. We'll move on to consent items. Anybody wishing to pull one? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Abbott.
Move to approve consent items 8.1 through 8.3.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Lawson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Christopher. I'm pushing. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. General business, 9.1. Consideration discussion and possible approval of a construction contract for the installation of new monument signs at Sparks Marina and Golden Eagle Regional Park, in the amount of $93,690. And we've been waiting for this for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam and city council members. My name's Brian Kason, Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I'm here today to request approval of a construction contract for two new monument signs located at the Sparks Marina and Golden Eagle Regional Park, in the amount of $93,690 to Yescov. These two signs will provide a backdrop to help promote the City of Sparks brand, especially during tournaments at Golden Eagle and special events at the Sparks Marina. Last year, the RSCBA approved $90,000 towards fabrication and installation of these two signs. The remaining $3,690 will be paid through the annual Facilities Improvement Fund within the FY18 Capital Improvement Plan. With that being the end of my presentation, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Questions, comments? Byby.
The signs are beautiful. I'm looking through our packet here. The only question I had, are we worried about vandalism, or are they a place that either kids are going to climb up on, or that... I wasn't quite sure. It looked like they were up higher out at Golden Eagle, at the Marina. It was kind of in a spot. Is it... How can we protect them against vandalism?
They are both in a place where, yes, they could be climbed on, they could be vandalized potentially, but ultimately, Yescov is going to do the best job they can to make those as vandal-resistant as possible with the materials they're using, just to prevent damage. But it's really difficult to really completely prevent that from happening. So, we'll do the best we can, but of course, if they really wanted to vandalize them, they probably could, but...
Okay, thank you.
I thought we were going to raise them up further at the Marina.
Well, just for visibility and just the overall look, getting them too high in the air, it just played with that a little bit, and it was just going to really look kind of funny with these letters kind of floating way up in the air, so...
Did we... Are we putting lights on these?
Yeah, yeah, they'll be internally lit.
They'll be uplit?
They'll be internally lit.
Internal lights, okay.
Yeah, and the little orange spark will be a different color. It'll be the orange color.
Okay. Well...
They should look really nice. I think they will.
And if we approve this today, it's June, you said? And if we approve this today, it's June, you said?
Yeah, we're looking at potentially June to basically get them going. I know YESCO is just going to, they've got to order all the materials, get them built, all that stuff, and as soon as we can get them installed, we will.
I think we have our first water event out there, June, second week of June.
Yeah, we'll try and get, I mean, the goal is to get it done.
That's a national deal. We really want those letters out there.
The goal is to get it done as soon as possible. It's just a matter of when they can get the electrical done and get everything installed, so...
Okay, any other questions or comments? Looking for a motion? Ms. Bybee?
I move to approve the construction contract for the installation of new monument signs at the Sparks Marina and Golden Eagle Regional Park, RFP number seventeen dash eighteen dash zero zero five in the amount of ninety-three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars to YESCO, of which Sparks' share will be three thousand six hundred and ninety dollars, as ninety thousand dollars will be reimbursed by the RSCVA.
Mr. Dare.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and is there any further discussion? Mr. Lawson?
You checked with the RSCVA again, and we're good on them reimbursing the ninety thousand?
Yes, yes, and I've got, I did include all the...
Actually approved that the last fiscal year.
Yeah, so I did approve, or take a look at all that, and I've got all the backup here. Jeff Kronk's actually contacted somebody over there to make sure that...
Be sure. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes unanimously, and I want to thank the RSCVA for their contribution. It was...
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, nine point two. Consideration, discussion, and possible approval of amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement between the redevelopment agency of the city of Sparks, the city of Sparks, and SWD Partners LLC to provide SWD Partners LLC the option to construct apartments at nine fifty-five C Street and at a later date request city of Sparks approval to convert the apartments to condominium units.
I'm Mayor Protem Smith, members of the council, Armando Ornelas, your Assistant Community Services Director. I think the title to the agenda item basically encompasses it all. It's a very simple agreement.
Really?
Basically, we're just modifying Article three point two point one A to allow the developer at a subsequent date to convert the project from apartments to condominiums. Any conversion would be subject to whatever provisions of, in our municipal code or in state law that may restrict or otherwise regulate such a conversion. But, you know, that could be a year down the line, or it could be ten years down the line, or it might be never.
And this is the C Street project?
This is the C Street project that Silverwing is undertaking.
Okay, questions or comments? Whose ward is that?
Mine.
Mr. Abbott?
I move to approve amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement between the redevelopment agency, the city of Sparks, and SWD Partners LLC to provide SWD Partners LLC the option to construct apartments at nine fifty-five C Street and at a later date request city of Sparks approval to convert the apartments to condominium units.
And Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, nine point three. First reading of bill number two seven three-two, an ordinance to annex into the city of Sparks real property approximately three point four seven acres in size located at thirty-six fifty Whittaker Road. Madam Clerk, I think I just read what you were supposed to read.
Pretty close. This is the first reading for bill number two seven three-two, a general ordinance providing for the annexation of certain lands to the city of Sparks, lands more specifically described as assessor parcel numbers oh two six dash three four one dash one three and oh two six dash three four one dash five one, a site approximately three point four seven acres in size owned by Lishu Lu located at thirty-six fifty Whittaker Road within the city of Sparks sphere of influence and providing other matters properly relating thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for bill number two seven three-two. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Nine point four. Madam Clerk?
This is the first reading for bill number two seven three-three, a general ordinance rezoning real property approximately three point four seven acres in size and located at thirty-six fifty Whittaker Road from SF fifteen, single-family residential, fifteen thousand square feet, to SF six, single-family residential, six thousand square feet, and providing other matters of property relating thereto.
Okay, this is the first reading for bill number two seven three-three. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular city council meeting on Monday, March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Nine point five. Madam Clerk?
This item has been pulled?
Well, that's right. So we'll move on to, there is no public hearing items. We'll move on to planning and zoning, public hearings, and action items. Eleven point one. Karen, how are you? Consideration, discussion, and possible action to certify an amendment to the comprehensive plan changing the land use designation from intermediate-density residential to commercial for a site point eight seven eight acres in size located eighteen fifty-five North McCarran Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem Smith and council. I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Actually, this item relates to the next two items on the agenda. I don't know if you'd like me to do one presentation, but you will have to do two public hearings and two motions.
You can do them both, and we'll just take separately as we make the motions.
So before you is a request for a comprehensive plan amendment and also rezoning for a property that's located at eighteen fifty-five North McCarran. You can see on the vicinity map, it's the property outlined in red. As I stated, there are two requests. The first one is a comprehensive plan amendment from intermediate-density residential to the land use, and here is the existing land use designation on this property, which is intermediate-density residential. They are requesting to change the proposed density, I mean, designation to commercial to allow an office use. For the zoning, the second request, they are, the property is currently zoned SF nine, which is single-family, nine thousand square foot lots. They are requesting to go to professional office land use. Reviewing the comprehensive plan findings, CP one, which is the conformance with the regional plan and the land use intensity designation, the property is located within the city of Sparks, TMSA, and is located within an older part of Sparks with direct access from North McCarran. I'll go back to the vicinity. Here's North McCarran. Up here's York, and below is Greenbry to give you a reference of where we're at. Their access is off of McCarran, which complies with goals one point one and one point two. The property is currently served by utilities, including city sanitary sewer, and is on an existing water service, well, for water service. As long as the well is pumping, the property can continue to use that water well on the property. Finding CP two, which is the comprehensive plan amendment, implements the listed goals. The approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning request would support goals MG one and MG two by adding land of non-residential designations. The comprehensive plan incorporates professional office land use in the commercial land use designation. We no longer have a separate land use for offices anymore. We incorporated that into, when we adopted the new comprehensive plan, we adopted commercial, make it a broader land use. The proposed zoning for the professional office will restrict the type of uses that can be allowed in that district, and that's outlined in my staff report. Finding CP threes compatibility with the surrounding area. The subject property is located on the western side of North McCarran Boulevard. To the north, along McCarran, the properties are designated commercial to allow office uses. The single-family homes to the east are separated by the North McCarran Boulevard, which had in two thousand and sixteen an average daily number of trips of eighteen thousand trips. To the south are existing single-family homes with their backyards having a common property line with the subject property. Conversion of the house to an office will require an administrative review, which at that time, we will address the buffering issues between the post office and the residential to the south. CP, finding CP four, which is public notice, it was published for the Planning Commission public hearing on December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen. On December eighteenth, the applicant did hold a public neighborhood meeting, which is required by the NRS. Three people attended that meeting and expressed no specific concerns. Addressing the rezoning on finding Z one, again, consistent with the Sparks comprehensive plan, the rezoning request is consistent, as I discussed, under finding CP two. If the comprehensive plan is not approved, then the rezoning request should not be approved either. Finding Z two, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses, again, the rezoning request is consistent with the discussion under finding CP three. The zone change request is consistent with the PO zoning to the north of the subject property. The traffic volumes on North McCarran Boulevard does not make the existing property an ideal location for single-family, and the office use will serve as a transitional use between the single families to the west and the McCarran Boulevard. Finding Z three, again, public notice. Public notices were sent out to property owners within seven hundred and fifty feet of the subject property for a total of two hundred and three notices, and it was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on December twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen for the Planning Commission hearing. There is no noticing requirements for city council. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to make a motion.
Okay.
To certify the amendment to the comprehensive plan changing the land...
Open the public hearing.
Pardon me?
You have to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just following the mayor protest.
No better. Okay, I'll open up. This is a public hearing item. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council.
Now we'll start over.
Okay.
I move to certify the amendment to the comprehensive plan changing the land use designation from intermediate-density residential to commercial for a site size point eight seven eight acres in size located at eighteen fifty-five North McCarran Boulevard based on the findings CP one through CP four and the facts supporting those findings as set forth in the staff report.
Ms. Bybee?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. It passes unanimously. Okay, we can go on to eleven two now, right? Mr. Lawson?
Let me get down to my motion here.
The public hearing, sir.
I think you need to have a public hearing. Or we could have a public hearing, and then I'll...
Why don't we have a public hearing?
It's a great idea. What's the deal?
You know what?
Look at that.
This is a public hearing item. Anybody in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Please, somebody speak at this time. Seeing none, bring it back to the council.
Are you ready?
Mr. Lawson?
You sure? I move to adopt bill number two seven three-one, rezoning real estate, real property approximately point eight seven eight acres in size and located at eighteen fifty-five North McCarran Boulevard, Sparks, Nevada, from SF nine to PO based on findings Z one through Z three and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Dare, you're off. Okay, seeing none, please vote. We got through it. It passes unanimously. Thanks, Karen.
Welcome to the neighborhood.
Yes.
I'm right up the street from you, so I'm looking forward to seeing you. The property looks awesome, by the way. Cleaning it up looks beautiful.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Comments from city council and city manager? Seeing none. You got it? Okay, then moving on, and if, without objection, we are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martini? Absent. Dare?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Item number four, four point one, approval of the agenda?
I approve.
I have a motion by agency member Dare to approve. Agency member Abbott?
I'll second it.
You second? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item number five, five point one, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand and eighteen for possible action. Any corrections, additions, or motion to approve? Agency member Abbott?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and agency member Dare?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item number six, business items, six point one, report of claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period January fourth, two thousand and eighteen through February seventh, two thousand and eighteen. Do I have a motion to approve? Agency member Abbott?
I move to approve the claims and bills approved for payment and the appropriation transfers.
Okay, do I have a second? Agency member Dare?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item number six point two, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement ACSRA three one six between the redevelopment agency of the city of Sparks, the city of Sparks and SWD Partners LLC to provide SWD Partners LLC the option to construct apartments at nine fifty-five C Street and at a later date request city of Sparks approval to convert the apartments to condominium units.
Chairwoman Bybee, members of the agency, I'm Armando Ornelas, the Assistant Community Services Director. This is the same agreement. It's, needs to be approved by both the agency and the city as both are parties to it, and so if you have any questions, I will address them.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, I'm looking for a motion. Agency member Dare?
I, let me read it. I move to approve amendment number one to the disposition and development agreement between the redevelopment agency, the city of Sparks, and SWD Partners LLC to provide SWD Partners LLC the option to construct apartments at nine fifty-five C Street and at a later date request city of Sparks approval to convert the apartments to condominium units.
Okay, do I have a second? Agency member Abbott?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Please vote. Once again, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're on item number seven, seven point one, comments from the public. Do I have any other, any comments from the public? Seeing none, I'll close that. Item seven point two, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Hearing none, we are adjourned.